That was approved on April 12, 2014, and subsequently approved at town meeting. Can you please break down the $4,442,779 between the legal settlement, the insurance settlement, FEMA funds, and steep funds? I would like an accounting of the Capital Projects Fund 57 for the Niantic Bay Boardwalk 2014. Question number two above should tell me the date the funds were deposited, the related expenditures, and C, the remaining balance, if any, of the account to be used for betterment and repairs. Question four, were the original claims that you/Phil Shear/Paul Fermica or whomever made in the amount of $1.7 million for Storm Irene and $1.1 million for Storm Sandy? And if so, did we ever receive any partial payment from FEMA to date? Do the anticipated payments, I imagine they've been received already, but at the time I wrote the memo, do the anticipated payments of $894,058.85 and $836,548.76 represent the total amount from the claims in question number four above? If we didn't receive any FEMA funds prior to the anticipated payments in question five above, how do we pay for the boardwalk repairs that were over and above the amount we received from the settlement and the insurance proceeds? There are two more amounts on the FEMA claim website related to disaster number 4087 in the amount of $173,005.24 and $122,896.99. This is the same disaster ID as the $836,548.76 figure. Am I correct in assuming these also belong to Eastline? And if so, what is the status of those payments? For your help on this. So I imagine that these questions that I emailed to you back on the 14 prompted the reduction of the Board of Selectmen's request from $1.7 million to $1.5 million at the BOS meeting on 8/19 to go toward the PSB project. And that is why all of the information that I requested is critical to the deliberation process that will take place at the September 9 Board of Finance meeting. I'm also looking forward to the three-to-four-page PowerPoint presentation as promised by the PSB Vision Committee Chair regarding disclosure of the full project cost and the methods of financing the complete project. Personally, I am not in favor of voting appropriations for the PSB project in a piecemeal fashion. In other words, I'm not in favor of voting for $1.5 million in appropriations next week to get the project started. And then for the Board of Selectmen to come back weeks from now, months from now, asking for additional funds to complete the project, whether that would be for the Sally Port and the holding cells or whatever additional money she would need to really complete this project. I heard at the last Board of Selectmen meeting that many of the selectmen wanted to make sure that this project was done the right way this time around. Asking for appropriations to partially fund the remaining balance of this project, in my mind, is not the right way. So when you come to us next week, I sincerely hope that you perhaps change your request to make sure that the complete funding is identified for what you will need to complete this project. And that is the reason why I'm speaking during your delegations this evening, because I don't want to waste any more time having you come to us next week and then saying, "Sorry, you know, we don't have all the information we need." So this is your opportunity to listen to my requests, and hopefully you'll be able to satisfy the information request before our meeting next week. And lastly, again, if the Board of Finance passes any such appropriation, particularly in the amount of money that we're talking about, please know that the expectation is still to have a referendum on this matter. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else like to speak to the Board of Selectmen this evening? Anyone else? Anyone else? Good, we'll move on to our meeting then. Approval of the minutes, special meeting of August 5, 2020.
I'll move to approve the special meeting minutes of August 5, 2020, as submitted.
Second?
It's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstained? All right, we have a regular meeting of the same night.
Okay, I forgot. This is Kevin Serry. I'm moving to approve the regular meeting minutes of August 5, 2020, as submitted.
Aldaigo, second?
Dago, seconds. Comments, corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Terrific. And we have a last special meeting a couple of weeks ago, August 19.
Yes, Kevin Serry, move to approve the special meeting minutes of August 19, 2020, as submitted.
Second?
Motion seconded by Dan, right? Mr. Kenny? Right, all right, terrific. Any questions, corrections, comments? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstained?
Any abstained.
And Mr. Siri, Mr. Salerno, right?
Yes.
Mr. Salerno abstains. Thank you. We have a consent calendar this evening?
This is Kevin Serry. I'll move to approve the consent calendar for the meeting of September 2, 2020 in the amount of $14,403.25.
Second, this is Mark Salerno.
Any comments, corrections? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Are there any abstentions? Okay, we'll go on to new business. Special appropriation and transfer of the Town Clerk's office. Let me bring that up. I did not want to just print out all of this. You know, due to the current COVID pandemic and the State of Connecticut Secretary of State's office requiring that we'll be mailing out all applications for absentee ballots for the upcoming election to every registered voter in Connecticut. As a result, Karen anticipates, our town clerk anticipates having to issue an extremely large number of absentee ballots. That was the case during the last election for the, well, a couple of weeks ago. So we're going to see another large number of absentee ballots requiring us, the town, to pay for that and also handle all that paperwork. Karen is requesting part-time clerical help for assistance, and the person she wants to use does have experience issuing absentee ballots that will help the office efficiently issue and return absentee ballots. She includes some of the calculations there as well. We also, there's a printing cost as well. There'll be 11,738 ballots to be printed at 60 cents. So it's seven, it's over $7,000. So we're asking for $14,312.40 to be transferred from contingency to the town clerk's budget to cover the upcoming election and associated costs.
I'll, to get the discussion started, I'll make a motion. It's Kevin Serry. I'll move to appropriate and transfer $14,413.40 from account number 01-01-120-200-500 contingency to the following accounts: part-time clerical town clerk, $2,929.68. Account 01-01-107-100-314, overtime town clerk, $4,340. And account 01-01-107-300-251, printing, dog license, and ballots, $7,042.80.
Second?
And Mr. Dago seconded. I heard, and I heard you, Roseanne, as well.
Excuse me, that wasn't the whole motion.
Oh, it wasn't, you're right. Okay, okay, I'm sorry. And I'll add to the motion for the presidential election and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. This request is made due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. In addition, approve the transfer of up to $3,846.96 from account number 01-45-421-100-311, Program Coordinator, Security Administration, PNR, to account number 01-01-107-100-311, Assistant Town Clerk's effective April 1, 2021, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. This is made to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you, Sandy.
Aldaigo, seconded as amended?
Second the amended motion. I know Mrs. Galbo is here this evening as well. Am I right, Karen? Do you want to unmute yourself? And you might be able to answer some questions. There you go. Thank you. Hi, Karen.
I am here, yes. Hi.
Appreciate you being here.
Yeah, I just, I would like to just, oh, sorry.
Well, no, go ahead.
Well, I wanted to give people a little bit of comparison as far as, like, the overtime goes. We did already go over our overtime for the primary, and just to compare, give you comparable numbers to the 2016 primary, which was also a presidential primary. That year, we issued 191 absentee ballots. This year, we issued 2,410. So it, that's, you know, that's why we went over for the overtime already. Last presidential election in 2016, we issued 1,073 absentee ballots. So for the primary, we doubled what we did for the election four years ago. So we're anticipating a huge amount. I did mention in there that our voters, our voter list as of 8/26 was 14,673 voters. And the State of Connecticut Secretary of State's office has recommended that we order 80% of that number in absentee ballots.
Right, and we generally have to comply with those recommendations.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah. And, you know, of course, we have a long, very good history of running efficient elections in this town with our registrars and our town clerk. And you all are to be commended with a long history of that. So we want to do things right. We want to support this. Karen, will the state be reimbursing us some of this money?
They have said that COVID expenses will be reimbursed, yes. So the finance office is keeping track of all of the expenses.
So if we get reimbursed, will the contingency account be replenished? Anna, is that a fair question?
That is certainly possible. However, we really wouldn't know when we're going to receive any reimbursements. Under the first round of FEMA funding, it's available through four expenditures related to COVID through December 31 of this fiscal year. And in addition to FEMA funds, the state also has a pool of funds through the end of this current year. We did receive notice today that we will be getting some, I believe it was a $2,800 notification today for election-related expenditures. The state sent us a transmittal. We'll be receiving the funds, I believe, tomorrow. However, the way that they send us a transmittal, it's unclear specifically whether the funds would be for registrar-related expenditures or town clerk-related expenditures. We made an inquiry today, and we haven't received a definitive explanation by the end of business today. So that'll be an ongoing process there. But we would certainly be in a position to do reimbursements for anything that we do receive during the fiscal year.
We can well imagine that the registrars will be experiencing higher expenses as well, even though there'll be less people coming to the polls. There'll be the security issues, because we're going to three polling stations this time, but also all the PPE equipment that'll be required, et cetera. So they're taking extra precautions as well. So we expect to do a request from them at some point, unless they're getting reimbursed. Yes?
Yeah, and if I just might add, in the month of August, they expended over $18,000 for the presidential primary.
For the primary, okay. Any questions about this request?
Mark, just the thing, I'm extremely supportive of this, because first of all, you know, I saw what was going on in the clerk's office just for the primary, and it was very cumbersome on just Karen and Brooke. Just the thought of having probably up to 8,000 ballots coming through, people coming in with questions, because even though it's self-explanatory, a lot of people do come in. And I think it's really important to have a couple people dedicated in that office to the ballots, because obviously there's going to be an immense amount of scrutiny under this election with so many absentee ballots. We're already hearing on a national level all the fraud that they're talking, both parties are talking about, and so forth like that. I think it's really important that we give our town clerk the resources necessary for her to do a job that they've never been asked to do. So I'm very supportive of it.
And of course, as, you know, regular business operations get back to normal, and then there's all backlog of work that the clerks have to catch up on, and then they're facing this as well. So this is not an unreasonable request. And again, we're hopeful that the state does eventually get around to reimbursing us. But those empty promises, those promises sometimes have been empty in the past. So we have to, you know, be sure that we have the money to pay for this extra expense right now. Any other questions?
Yes. Previously, we, I believe, gave additional, agreed, voted for additional funding for the registrars in anticipation of the primary turnout and also knowing that there was going to be additional burden for the presidential election. Do we know yet if all of those expenses have been paid and whether or not they have any remaining money?
Anna, do you know where they are as far as their actual budget goes? They had some money where they thought they'd be able to lend a hand to the clerk's office as this thing develops as well, that they might be able to also help out. And that was part of a conversation at one point.
Okay.
But Anna, do you know where they are as far as their annual budget goes?
Well, in terms of what they had budgeted to pay for the individuals to work at the polls, they had a $25,000 budget this year, and they've spent, they used over $18,000 just for the presidential primary. So I don't think that they're going to have any resources to assist in any of the needs of the town clerk's office. And I expect that they will also be making a request for additional funds.
Well, that was what I was, that was what I was curious about as to why they didn't make the request for funds along with the town clerk's office so we could figure out a total cost. But you didn't receive any request yet?
Not yet.
Not from, not yet, no.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I think also, Roseanne, I think the brunt of it, especially during September and October, the brunt is going to be felt in the town clerk's office, because that's where all the absentee ballots applications will be coming in, going out, and then come the ballots coming back in. So I think they'll have a better idea what they'll need as we move a little forward.
Well, I agree, but I just wanted to make sure that at this point, all of the registrars' expenses had been covered with the money that we had already awarded them. So if we already know that they have a shortfall, then we should, that should just be on, so to speak, our rolodex here that we're going to be expecting a request from them as well.
Yes, and we will. And again, hopefully there'll be some state money that would reimburse towns with the extra expenses during this unprecedented time. So we just want to cover our bases, and we want to give the clerk permission to go out and hire that third person. Don't forget, the clerk's office, for years and years and years, had three people working in it. And a couple of years ago, our reduction of, you know, town hall personnel to consolidate operations, we did remove someone from that office. It was times like this that we could use that extra help. So we're bringing someone in part-time to cover the next couple of months, and they want permission to do that. It's a worthy request, and hopefully we'll get your support. Is there no other questions?
I just have a comment. I would just point out that in Karen's letter, the person she has in mind has absentee ballot experience. So I think we're fortunate in that regard, and that'll lend to even greater efficiency for their office, so it's good.
We run a very good office over there, Karen. You do.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Are there any abstained? Ayes have it, 6-0. We'll move on to the next item, which is a special appropriation, CNRE Gateway Development Sidewalk, $105,000. Folks, the Board of Zoning Commission made a decision on one of the phases of the Gateway Development Project with the apartments up on the hill behind Costco, that when they were going for their second phase, which is now starting to open, their townhouses, and they'll have an open house soon, and I'll encourage you to come up and take a look at them, that the planned sidewalk that was supposed to go down, I believe it's East Society Road, which would connect, you know, the, et cetera, with the bridges all the way down to the apartment complex, there was initially a sidewalk that was required. And of course, that road was redeveloped and built by the project, because it ended up going through a dirt cloth. They finished the road into their project. We had discussions with the developer, the project, the people, and they were requesting not to build the sidewalk. It would be a very expensive project. It'd be a sidewalk that would get little use. They have sidewalks throughout their complex for walking, and there's walking trails. They don't, and there'll be a sidewalk that connects their project over the bridge to the Costco project. So going south is a more natural place for sidewalks to be, or I guess it's east. So they negotiated with the zoning commission who approved deleting or, yeah, deleting the sidewalks from the initial project approval and instead receiving $105,000 for sidewalks to be built by our Public Works Department at a later time. We have a dire need for sidewalks all over town, and $105,000 would just be a scratch, just a drop in the bucket of the kind of money that we would need to build sidewalks down, say, East Society or Oswego Gachi Hills Road or Long Flanders Road near Gordon Pond. So the request for the $105,000 basically is to put that money somewhere now that we've received it. And we have a CNRE fund for sidewalk construction and repair that we would like to put it in. That way, it sits there. We don't spend it right away. We don't lose the money. It doesn't go to the rainy day fund at the end of the year. We don't have to reappropriate it. And as sidewalk projects come up, Joe Bragam and, along with his crews, us and the planning department, who is putting together the POCD, which will have a sidewalk chapter in the POCD about a plan for sidewalks. In fact, in Joe's note, he mentions that they don't have a plan for sidewalks. So, well, the POCD calls for a plan for sidewalks, and we'll be utilizing that in the coming years. So the very simple request is not extra money from the taxpayers, nothing more than we have $105,000 check. We'd like to deposit it into the CNRE account for future use. And that is basically what we're hoping to do tonight is to approve that.
Well, sidewalks are not something that usually come before the Board of Selectmen. I'm aware of that. And this is not an uncommon practice for a developer when developing a new project to ask for an exclusion for sidewalks. And we've done this in the past and allowed them to deposit a certain amount of money into an account that would be used for sidewalks and other parts of the town. So that in itself is not unusual. But this is a development that is already three-quarters of the way developed. It seems to be 100% developed. And this is a request of the developer. I would be interested in knowing what the residents of that place, of Gateway, feel about this. After all, they're the ones who would be the primary utilizers of the sidewalk. Do we have any input from them?
There wasn't a lot of pedestrian traffic on that road after the first phase. It's a wide enough road that if you're jogging or biking, there's enough room there. It's a rural road. We did not survey them, and, but that was the testimony, a rural road. We did not survey them, but that was the testimony, and that was the observation of the zoning commission. This deal was already done by the zoning commission. So this is already a done deal, whether they did the right thing or not. I assisted in the development, in the negotiation of what the amount should be. But it's $105,000 that they are putting up, already have put up, for development of sidewalks elsewhere. I hear you, Roseanne, but I think there was a lot of observation about that road after they put the 400 or the 280 units in. And again, that's, it's kind of a road to another rural road. It's not a place where you would go down there to get to the store, to get the newspaper, to walk the kids to school. It's kind of a, it's a rural road that leads to other rural roads. And that, people aren't typically using that road. It's certainly not for the sidewalk, or don't need a sidewalk. Again, there are sidewalks within the complex. So if you had a newborn, and mom or dad are out walking the newborn in a carriage, there's plenty of roadway and plenty of sidewalks within the complex, as well as going to their clubhouse and their pool. And now with the new complex, there'll be more roadways and sidewalks within the complex. Other comments?
Mark, with, you know, with the decision being made in the check-in house, we have, we do have higher priorities for sidewalks in our town, especially connecting Flanders Road. So I do support this. And I do support, and I always have a comprehensive sidewalk plan. We do need one. And it's a long time in coming, so.
And another thing, if I may, in reading through it, it looked like some of this money was hopefully to be used for making it handicapped accessible for some of the areas that aren't. And that's certainly an important use for that money. So I would, you know, taking care of what we already have, making it more accessible. So I would certainly support it.
Great. Mr. Daigle?
Yeah, just a question. You mentioned that installing the sidewalk would be expensive. What was the difference between what they offered up and what their cost would have been to install it? Was it a one-for-one dollar? Or was it negotiated at some reduced value?
Yeah, I think it, I think it was a 50% value, that they put the sidewalk in for $210,000, or we'll give you 105. You can spend it wherever you want. And that was the deal that the zoning commission approved.
I appreciate having that knowledge. And I also support this. It's an opportunity to invest that money where we'll get the greatest return on it for the citizens of Eastline. So, thank you.
Okay.
I'm going to vote against it on the basis of the cost. The developer has made a lot of money on that project, and I think what it would have cost them to put, to put the sidewalks in, I think it should have been an equal exchange. So I'll be voting against it. And I agree, we do need sidewalks in other places. And that would be all the more reason for the puzzlement, and why it was negotiated that it would only be half of what the cost would have been for them. So I will vote against it.
Okay.
Prior to making the motion, I'm going to support it, because as I think Dan pointed out, you know, we have some areas in town right now where we need to make a handicap accessible, as well as the fact that, unlike most towns, we're responsible for the maintenance of all the sidewalks in town. And just walking down Main Street now, or Penn Avenue, you can see there's so many areas where we are desperately now of repair work, before we even move to that next step of expanding the number of sidewalks we have. So I think this is a little bit of a good start to have some money set aside for this, specifically for sidewalk repair and extension. So I'll make-
Obviously, if we had the $210,000, we'd be able to do twice as much.
I'll move to approve a special appropriation of funds received from G D E L, the amount of $105,000 in CNR account, 32-70-300-500-007. Sidewalk repair to be used for new sidewalks, repairs to existing sidewalks, and enacting ADA compliance on sidewalks, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. This resolution is passed under the guidance of Executive Order 7 S Sierra, with no town meeting, and being less than 1% of the current budget.
Second. Mark Salerno.
Mr. Salerno, second. Further comment? Some of the sidewalk money, I'll give you two examples. We just rebuilt the sidewalks down Columbus Ave that goes to Cook's Beach. That was in terrible shape. And when we did that, we also put in the handicap accessibility on some curb cuts. But there was another sidewalk, and we actually got many calls from parents with children with special needs and handicap, physical handicap situations, where they can cross. We had that great news crosswalk across from the high school, and you would hit the button, and the lights blank, and then the vehicles slow down, hopefully stop, and the students cross. But they crossed to a dirt path. They did cross to a dirt path. So it was just this little bit of sidewalk that we needed. And those are the kind of things that when we see something like that, Joe and his team can go and fix something. There's, at the end of Hope Street, we're right around Castello's Restaurant, around the curb, and there's no sidewalks. So you have to step out into the street, make, walk on the road, and then get back up onto the sidewalk. So that's another detail we're looking to do, as well as some of the big projects as well. So we have a motion. It's been seconded. Any further comment?
I just, I have a question. Just want to be clear. We've already received the funds from G D E L. So that is enough for negotiation at this juncture. So we're just talking about the appropriation and what we, how we treat those funds.
Where we put it. Where we put it. Where, in order for us to put anything into a CNRE account, we have to appropriate it.
Yep.
Okay. So, any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstain? Okay, five one. See, on our, on our list is the reimbursement of the public safety building utilities from prior year and this current year. Utilities are low for a 30,000 square foot building. When we bought the building, we didn't know we were buying the building. It went to referendum in February. We passed papers in May. Of course, the budgets were already developed by then. So in order to pay electric bills and gas bills, we borrowed into the project funds. Of course, this is a town facility. It's not, you know, utilities are not project-driven. They are operational expenses. So we're asking that the project be reimbursed for the utilities 2019, 2020, and this current year, 2021, of $30,000 that year, $40,000 this current year coming up. And we will do that through, is that a contingency account? Yes.
What's that?
You want to put a motion out to us, so we can decide the discussion?
Can I just mention, in the first part of the motion, we need to put the dollar amount, it's $30,058.29.
I'm going to close it again, Anna, $30,000? Okay.
Yes.
$30,158, huh?
30,158.29. It's on your agenda.
Yep. So for six C, I'll move to approve an operating transfer in the amount of $30,158.29 out of the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020, general fund account 01-01-120-200-500 contingency to Public Safety Building Project Fund Account 57-70-028-500-002 renovations, F F V-P S building, with an effective date of June 30, 2020, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. And then move to authorize the use of up to $40,829 in the 2020, 2021 budget account 01-01-120-300-501, Public Safety Building contingency, for the estimated clerical, I could, pretty estimated electric and heating allocations, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Second, Paul Daigle.
Mr. Daigle, second. Any questions?
I'd just like to make a statement that this is taxpayer money. We own the building. It is a related cost to the decision by the residents and by the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance to purchase this building. And it is not a actual project cost of purchasing the building, but it's a related cost to operate the building now that we own it.
Indeed. Yes, Anna?
Yeah, I just wanted, in the second part of the motion, it's $40,890.
What did I say?
Eight hundred, you said eight twenty-nine, I believe.
Okay. Forty thousand, eight hundred, I'll amend it then to forty thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. And my apologies, because I have the right number here.
Paul Daigle, I'll second the amended amendment to the motion.
Great. Thank you. So we're clear on those numbers, right? And they're before you on your, on your agenda. I'll correct it and all that, if you need that. I spelled out. Are there any other questions? Comments? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Appointment of Attorney Willets. Kevin?
I will move to, Ms. Kevin Siri, I'll move to appoint Attorney William Willetts Jr. to examine the indices of the land records for calendar year 2020, in accordance with Connecticut General Statute Section 7-14, for the sum of $2,000.
Mark Salerno, second.
Motion and second. Any questions?
Just a comment to thank Mr. Willetts. He's been doing this for decades, and the amount of money is extremely generous on his part. So I'm sure it cost him at least that amount of money to do that. So we thank him.
He's a good servant. He serves us well in our town. He still is, is he still an emeritus status in the-
Yes, he is.
Been serving our town on Parks and Rec for decades and decades, and still does that, in emeritus status. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Any abstain? You know, we have, we have a special guest tonight. Hey, Jack, Jack LeBeau. There you are. Are you, are you, are you joining us from your dorm room?
I sure am.
Oh, he lets you into university, huh?
Surprisingly.
Jack, you wrote us a nice note. It came in like, at the one minute past midnight, it said at the 11th hour, that I couldn't include it in the last Board of Selectment meeting. But you were very generous in your, in your gratitude to the Board of Selectmen. We wanted to have you aboard. If you want to just give a, give a hello, and update us on who you are and what's going on.
Sure. Yeah, so I'm here at my dorm room in Nichols College. I wouldn't want to repeat myself too much in the letter. I don't know if you read it or not. But yeah, I just want to thank each and every one of you. That was really amazing to get that award out of all the awards that could have been granted. Really means a lot coming from the board. I do want to thank you, Mr. Nickerson, for your work that week. That was really awesome. The whole week we put together, really crazy, but it worked out. And of course, Mrs. Hardy, my beloved contemporary issues teacher, couldn't do this without you. I know everyone that, I know, speaking on behalf of everyone that you've taught in your career at Eastline, I know everyone would certainly be appreciative of your work. And I really have enjoyed the last two years of your class. I've learned so much in it. So thank you again. That was really awesome.
That's nice, Jack.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, Roseanne, do you have something to say?
Excuse me?
Do you have something to say?
Well, I would like to say that, and I thought I would be a little bit disappointed not going back to school this year for the first day. This would have been, this would have been my 71st first day of school. And so, a bit of sadness in not having the ability to work with students such as Jack. And it was a delight to work with Jack. We worked on so many projects together, and I could always count on him. So now that he's no longer my student, I'm happy to say that he'll be my friend. So good luck, Jack.
That's- Thank you.
That's great. You know, Jack, I'll echo what Roseanne said. You're a great, you're a great leader this year. What a tough year to be the president of the class. I mean, it's tough to be the first selectman during COVID. It was, it's tough to be the chair of the council of governments. This, this, this is just, it's very difficult, and many different leadership positions. And I bump into Jeff Newton, our superintendent, often, and he's got the toughest job in the world, trying to get kids back, and trying to get parents back in line, and get the teachers back. But, but Jack, you, you, you know, you showed great leadership and great patience when we, when this whole thing unfolded, and there's, you know, all these hungry seniors wanting their prom, and wanting their graduation, and wanting all the privileges to come along with, with being a senior after 12 years, 13 years of education in the system. And they didn't get it. They didn't get to do what was promised to them. But we tweaked it a little bit, and we created some fun stuff, and, and you showed great leadership, and you were a good voice to the students in your class. So I congratulate you. It'll be a great learning experience, no doubt.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So tell us about first week of school. You probably just moved in a week ago. Are you going to classes? Are you stuck in your dorm room? I mean, what's-
Yeah, well, we're sort of stuck in the dorms. But we have in-person classes about, about half the time, and then the other half, they're online. So I had a couple today. And I actually just got the paperwork to run for student government here. So I look forward to doing that.
Awesome. I'll come up.
All right. All right, Jack. Okay, Jack, have a great, have a great year, and we wish you good luck in your election. Maybe we'll, maybe we'll do a campaign poster for you and send it to you.
Nice. I would appreciate it.
We'll be the endorsed candidate from the Board of Selectmen in Eastline.
Yeah.
I wish you well. Good, good luck with your studies, and you'll come and visit us when you're on break and all that.
Yep. Will do. Thanks.
Take care.
Take care.
Look. We'll do ex officio reports next. It's good to hear from Jack. He's a good, good student, good guy. Ex officio reports, Mr. Daigle?
No meeting, but there was approached by the Harbor and Shelfice Commission regarding a question about the town boundaries between the town of Waterford and the town of Eastline, whether the boundary is in the current channel, or whether it's in the middle of the river. Obviously, the town was incorporated before the channel was installed. So I don't know if there's been a answer provided yet. I don't know if legal, town legal is looking at that. But that is an open question, as of the beginning of this week, at least, Mark. So I know that commission's looking for an answer.
Well, Paul, there was a study done on that, and there should be legal documents. This was done maybe 10 years ago, maybe 12 years ago, when the same question came up. So in the town clerk's office, there should be, I mean, we had attorney opinions, and this should be documented. The commission, the chair of the commission should be able to go into town hall and find that. Shouldn't have to pay attorney fees again, it was determined. And I believe that it was also authorized by the state.
Okay.
Let's dig that up, Paul. I can help you with that. It looks like Karen has dropped off the call. We could have put her on that tonight. But we'll, we'll get to that. And no doubt, Mr. O'Connell probably worked on it back then. So we might be able to just tap his, his brain and find out what the answer was there. But yeah, I've seen, I saw the emails bouncing back and forth on that issue.
Thank you. That's all I had tonight.
Okay. Mr. Cunningham?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Well, it's summer months. Mrs. Hardy?
The zoning commission's going to be meeting this week. And I think a lot of the commissions are now getting into the swing of things and realizing that we're not going to be going back to live meetings very soon. So that's it.
Okay. Yeah, we, you know, try some hybrid. Well, I'll speak to that under my report. Mr. Salerno?
Planning last night, and they had a, they had an application that's been continued, and they had a referral to zoning on, Mark Zimorka had an application to change some of the affordable housing district changes in the regulations. They found it inconsistent with the P O C D, particularly because it reduced setbacks and it increased building height sizes. And there already was a vehicle to, to allow for affordable housing in the regulations. The P O C D, is it next meeting we're going to be discussing that? Is that going to be on next meeting's agenda to approve?
Today, it's going to be on our agenda to have, give feedback, and, well, at least talk about it. Yeah.
That's the next meeting, right?
Correct.
And we have a certain deadline that we have to get back to them, right?
We'll be well within the deadline. But yeah, they requested, I think, 30 or 60 days.
It was 60 days. And we will have to decide whether we're going to a public hearing or not. I don't know if we've decided that.
I think we should that night, talk about it, based on what's being proposed.
Okay, so that'll be next, next meeting agenda. The only thing from library is they actually have pretty good circulation. There are 85% of what they've been operating at, what they operated at last year. So with everything going on, they're still, still getting a lot of business.
Great.
That's it.
Great, great. And whom am I missing? Mr. Siri, the deputy first selectman?
District Parks and Rec, they had a meeting a few weeks ago. And they, pretty much on weekends, when the weather's been nice, they've been pretty much reaching capacity by about 10:30 in the morning at all the parks. And that would mean they would have sold out on their limited number of out-of-town day vehicle passes and resident parking as well. So it's been crowded. But Dave said people have been really good. It's, you know, for the most part, you know, obviously, a few people complaining. And he'll see some things on social media. But for the most part, he said it's been very little complaints. People abiding by the regulations for the most part. The boardwalk, minor problems with it two-way, but nothing that he said is significant. So pretty much, obviously, revenues are down a bit. He's going to have some figures for the next meeting coming up next month, or later on, September. He'll have some idea of how much there are from revenue from this year to date. That's it.
Terrific.
Mark?
Yeah.
A non-ex officio report. I'd like to extend the thanks to the Nyanic Main Street, who today, in conjunction with the Connecticut Chapter, American Foundation for Suicide, posted Suicide Prevention Month signs throughout the downtown district with the businesses. And September is Suicide Prevention Month. And Suicide Prevention Week, I believe, is the week- Prevention Month, and Suicide Prevention Week, I believe, is the week following the Labor Day week. So with COVID going on, with stresses on a lot of people's lives, it's important that people understand there is resources out there that they can reach out to in a time of need. So kudos to Main Street for working with the Connecticut Chapter of American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. Want to thank them very much.
Thank you, Paul. Yeah, I noticed that they picked that up and, you know, you know, put, put, put some branding out there, if you will, and keep that awareness out there. And of course, is there any, any talk about the Jingle Bell Run? Do you think you're going to have that this year?
Right now, the Jingle Bell Run is going to be held. We do not yet know if it'll be, we're going to get, give folks the option to do it virtually. We don't know if we'll go live. We'll see how COVID progresses over the next couple of months.
Yeah, well, we're all waiting and seeing. And while we're all waiting and seeing and making plans two weeks in advance, and not much more than that, because who can plan? The governor did push the state of emergency out to February 9. I woke up to that news a couple days ago, and it broke my heart, thinking that this is going to go on that long. But realistically, it probably is. You know, we, we're in a very good place in the state of Connecticut right now compared to other places. But with students back in the classroom and, and cold weather coming, who knows? Who knows? So and no, no vaccine yet available. So we'll see how that goes. I made, I made mention about the big room at the town hall. We are having some meetings there that do not broadcast. So meetings like the Board of Assessment Appeals will be doing their, their appeals meetings, appointments coming up and later this month, a few other meetings could meet in the big room, six feet apart, wearing masks. We have that room kind of spread out. But meetings where we do broadcast and record, we typically will keep it on Zoom for now. We're going to look for ways to hybrid. There is a way to, to buy a Zoom connection where, you know, we would use the cameras in the room, and what we broadcast would go out on Zoom. It's a, it's a several thousand dollar item that, that I've been reluctant to pull the trigger on. So we're going to do it this way and try to make up a hybrid situation. This is very efficient. I miss you guys. I miss your presence. I think meetings are more dynamic when we're together. But, you know, in light of what's going on for this short period of time in the history of the town, we can, we can get through this. There are meetings, such as a zoning meeting with the site plans, and there's public comment and all that, where it makes it very difficult to do it on Zoom. And we're, I'm working with the land use commissions on how we might be able to get into a hybrid situation and keep people safe. The question is, how do you, if 200 people show up for a controversial application, we can't put 200 people in the room. We can only put 100 people together, but by the state of emergency declarations, by the executive orders. So what happens when 101 people show up? Do you deny that person their right to be in a public meeting? So we're struggling with that. Or do we require people to sign up early? Kind of not purchase a ticket, but obtain a ticket to the show, if you will, and all others can watch it on Zoom at home. So we'll work through that. Right now, it's business as usual. That room is torn apart as far as the audio visual goes. We're getting new mics, new cameras, new recording equipment, handheld mics for those making presentations. It's a total upgrade. It's been on my to-do board in my office. If you've been there, it's been up there for a long time. Nice to see you here. And it's nice that we've got a grant to, to pay for this. So that's, that's, that's what I got going on there. I have some other comments that I'll reserve to the selectmen's response. I'll open it up for public comment. Anybody like to speak publicly?
Before, before we do that, I have one more question. Anna is still there. What is the, what's the progress on getting the answers to the Chair of the Board of Finance questions? And when those answers come up, I would appreciate it that that memo would be forwarded to the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, so I've been working on putting all the documentation together, and I pretty much have it finished. And, you know, I plan to send it out with their agenda packages. And I can forward a copy of the information to the Board of Selectmen.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Public comment? Comments? I'll check the chat. No public comment. The selectmen's response. I'll just, I'll put, there's some mighty requests from the Chair of the Board of Finances. You know, we all have to stay in our own lanes, right? The Board of Selectmen have, has forwarded a $1.5 million appropriation request. It's not something that's negotiated. It's up or down. We cannot put together a bonding resolution unless we know that that 1.5 is being approved. We've already had two bonding resolutions. We paid thousands of dollars for the bond council to put these things together. And one was denied by, by the Board of Finance. The other one was approved by us, and then we pulled it from the Board of Finance because of this appropriation, knowing that the numbers would alter. I did not want to put together a $700,000 bond. Is it, would it be 700,000? The difference between the $2.2 million and the 1.5, $700,000 bond, if we didn't have this appropriation approved. We will be looking for this appropriation to be approved. In the meantime, all the questions have been answered already, I think, several times. But Paul Daigle will be there with his answer list once again to the Board of Finance, and we'll also have the architects there to answer any questions. It is the Board of Selectmen's intention to, once we know if that appropriation has been approved or not, to ask for the full amount to finish this building. Sometimes it feels like we're not all on the same team, working for the betterment of the town, that, you know, we have a police building, and we have a police force in dire need of a proper facility. They don't have it. I don't want to spend money on a building that isn't ours, that is due to be torn down and sold after we move them out. We're trying to avoid those kind of expenses. It's, it doesn't feel like we're all going in the same direction sometimes. It feels a lot like politics at work, and that there's just a lot of fighting going on. And that's unfortunate. And the people that are paying the price are the police and public safety first responders in our town, who are waiting patiently, but losing their patience, I might add, on that. And I don't want to spend, the good taxpayers of our town, I don't want to spend their money on temporary fixes, on emergency fixes for the police as we go into another year of this. We will go to the Board of Finance with that $1.5 million request next week. We asked for them to see it, to do this earlier. They did not schedule a special meeting. We'll wait till their regular meeting. It's naive to think that tonight we were going to approve a bond resolution that hadn't been developed, that they would be getting both of them at the same time next week. We're going to do it this way, which is they will have a $1.5 million request, and knowing that the bond resolution will be right behind it. I know this Board of Selectmen will come together very quickly, as soon as we can develop a bond resolution, to move it so that we can finance the full project, and then move it to the Board of Finance. And lastly, I'll make note that it is the Board of Selectmen that decides whether it will go to referendum or not. We are the Board of Selectmen. We decide those things, not the Board of Finance. So that said, we, next on our agenda is the executive session. So I'll ask all those who are not on the Board of Selectmen to exit, please.
And I will move to enter into executive session at 8:38 PM for the purpose of discussing real estate issues. And who do you, do you have anybody you want to include, Mark?
No.
Okay.
I'll second.
Bye, Sandy. Talked in the morning. Someone just removed a few people here. And Sandy, Sandy, you're still there.
No, she's gone.
Okay. I'll have to physically remove a few people. There are six participants in this meeting, and only six. I will turn off the recording.